So, good evening, everybody, and Area 58. This is the Town of Carver zoning board of appeals meeting held on the Zoom platform for the date of January 12, 2021. I always sort of have to catch myself these days. I'm still writing 2020 and saying 2020, but we are now in the new year. And we have an administrative matter scheduled first on our agenda, and that is approval of the meeting minutes for December 17, 2020. This was our last meeting date, and as is my custom, after those minutes were drafted and edited, I circulated the copy of those minutes to everybody in advance of tonight's meeting so that they could read through those and study those and determine if there was any need for change, amendment, or modification. Did everybody receive their copy of the meeting minutes for December 17, 2020?
Yeah.
Yes.
I ask now the board collectively if they have any changes they'd like to make. I don't hear that there is anybody who wants to make change, so I ask for a motion.
A move that we accept them as written?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I guess Fran beat you to the punch there, Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
So those meeting minutes of December 17, 2020 are now approved. We have one case on our agenda for this evening. It is a continued case, case number 124-102-2. The petitioner being Matthew Mitko. Hello, Matt. Good evening.
Good evening.
A petition was filed seeking a special permit pursuant to Sections 2245(c), 2310, 2320, and 5221 and 5300, and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 1 Russell Homes Way in Carver, which is at Accessories Map 122, strike that, Map 124, Lot 102-2, to construct a 30 by 45 square foot detached garage with a 12 by 45 square foot lean-to that will be 12 feet from the side property. The proposed garage is 1,890 square feet. The maximum allowed is 700 square feet. Side setback required is 30 feet in a residential agricultural district. Just so that I can sort of set the history of this case for everybody who may be watching and interested. The board initially opened a public hearing on this matter on December 1, 2020, and testimony was received from Mr. Mitko at that time. We then decided that we needed a site visit in view of the size of the garage proposed and location on the lot. So on December 12, 2020, the board met at the property and conducted a site visit. So we resumed in public session on December 17 in the absence of Mr. Mitko. Let the record reflect that the day before, we had had a very bad storm in town, and Mr. Mitko was not present for that meeting on December 17. So by vote of the board... Sorry?
I just said I apologize for that.
Okay. So by vote of the board on December 17, we continued the matter to tonight, January 12, 2021, and again gave notice through the planning department to Mr. Mitko that we would be meeting to hopefully adjudicate a conclusion to his petition, which was filed. And the public hearing initially opened, as I said, on December 1. So that's the history of this case. Mr. Mitko, I'm going to give you the floor to begin. And if you would like to address the board with regard to any changes in your plan, anything that you feel we should be knowing about before we go to a vote on this?
Well, the only thing is the size of the building. We had... I'm sorry, something just popped up on my computer. I can't see everyone, so give me one moment to try to fix that. Okay. Yes. When you would all come out to my property, I had talked with you about the size of the building, and I thought about making it smaller than initially when I initially wanted. So my plan is to do a 30 by 36 size building. But that was the only change, I believe, to the proposed building.
Anything else that you'd like to say, Mr. Mitko, before I turn the discussion over to the members of the board?
I don't think so. I think I've made... You know, you all came to my property and looked and saw the building I wanted to put up, and we talked about the size and the location. So I think you understand what I'm asking for. I appreciate your cooperation.
Members of the board, any questions or comments?
Did... I didn't catch it. What did he say the size of the building was?
30 by 36 is what he said.
And is 36 fronting the street?
No.
The 30, so the length is 36?
Does the 30... Excuse me. Does the 36 include the lean-to?
Well, it depends what side of the building I were to put that lean-to. The lean-to would be 12 feet, so it's a 12-foot overhang. And if you remember my property, to put the lean-to on the right side of the building, I'd have to move my existing utility shed, and I'd rather not do that. So I had proposed putting the lean-to on the back of the building so that that would be a 12-foot overhang beyond the 36-foot length. And I have... There's quite a ways between there and the property line. I don't know how many feet, but probably 30 or 40 more feet to the property line.
Who else would like to be heard?
Without a plan, I just trying... I'm trying to draw this as I hear it. So it's 30 by 36, but the lean-to is not part of the building now?
Well, it's just a 12-foot overhang that will stick off the back of the building. And if it goes in the back of the building, no one will probably be able to see it or anything.
Okay. We don't consider that part of the square footage?
No.
Eric, our math guy, what's the square footage?
Who are you going to ask that? Hold on.
Well, no, we go to you.
I did it. It's 1,080 square feet, 30 by...
Eric, can you check her math, please?
Oh, that's hurtful.
I know it comes from that side of the board, the answer.
Eric, do you have a calculator there?
Yeah, I concur. 1,080 feet.
Yeah. That's 30 by 35, right?
No.
No, that's...
30 by 36.
30 by 36 is 30. And so that would be a special permit over 7... So the 700 square feet for a shed, a garage, right?
Correct.
So that would be 380. Somebody check that math, too.
Yep, you're right.
Okay. And as far as the placement goes, it's still in the general area that we saw, so you would...
Oh, yes. Exactly what I told you.
So your idea was that it was at least 12 feet from the side lot, but not having an engineered plan, it would be within the... The board could ask you for what's called an as-built plan because this is going to be on a slab, right?
That's right.
So once the slab is poured, they come out and take the measurement to make sure that it's... Before the walls go up, they come out and take a measurement to make sure that it's more than 10 feet away from the lot line. If it's less than 10 feet away from the lot line, you're back in front of us.
Well, I have it marked off for 12 feet away.
Right. But it's where you marked it off, right? So it's...
Well, sure, but I did have the property surveyed before I did that.
Okay, but because we don't have an actual plan where the surveyor has shown, you know, this is... We don't have an actual plan where this building is going to go. We have a plan where the general building is going to go.
Right.
So it would be within the purview of the board to require an as-built, which is something your builder could probably provide. It's not bringing out a surveyor again, but it's just having an inspector sign off that you're not inside 10 feet. And it's only because we have... You're kind... I mean, 2 feet, that's kind of close to a lot line. So we just want to be sure on that.
So I would ask the builder for an as-built plan.
The condition would be after it was poured. But a condition if we choose to grant would be that we would require an as-built plan submitted to verify that it was... It met the dimensional requirements from the lot line.
Absolutely.
And then the rest of the board can address that idea if they wish. Or not.
Anybody else care to be heard?
The only thing that I wanted to bring up is... And I know this is going to be a metal building, but I know at our first board meeting, we talked about second floor and not second floor. And I just wanted to remind the board that we talked about a condition that second floor would be for storage only.
This building will not have any type of a second floor.
No loft, no...
No loft, no loft, no second floor.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I think, folks, at this juncture, it might be useful for me to go through what we have been told already by the petitioner to make sure that we all understand the scope and nature of this project and also so Mr. Mitko can hear and confirm or verify for us that I have these facts correct. Okay?
Great.
So initially, you came before us looking to construct a 30 by 45 square foot garage, 1,890 square feet, with a 12 by 45 square foot lean-to. And there would be no foundation insofar as this lean-to is concerned. This would be a dirt floor. This is what we were told initially by you.
That's right.
The proposed construction would not be attached to the residence. And because it is detached or would be detached, the lean-to would be at least 12 feet from the side property line. So we eventually determined because of this that no side setback dimensional relief would be necessary because our bylaws allow for a 10-foot or require a 10-foot setback when we're dealing with a detached accessory structure under 2245b of the bylaw. Everybody with me so far? The lean-to would have no foundation, would be open on the sides, and because it would not have a foundation, its square footage would not be counted as part of the total. And the proposed construction, Mr. Mitko, you told us would be used for storage of a camper, a car, a tractor, bobcat, various tools and equipment.
Correct.
Yes?
That's right.
And I think you also told us that the roofs of the proposed garage in lean-to would consist of the same materials so that we'd have a more aesthetically pleasing and consistent look to these structures. Is that true?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm planning on them being the same exact colors as our home, red and white.
Would it be the same materials, the same construct?
Well, not the same material. My house isn't metal, but same colors.
Same colors, okay. You also told us then and also again tonight that the garage would be one floor, would have electricity, and radiant floor heat only. Is that true?
That's true. Yep. That's my plan. That's what I'm hoping for.
No water inside?
No, sir.
Now, one thing that is going to change based upon our site visit is you had told us originally, back on December 1, that no trees would need to be cut down to accommodate the proposed construction. It looked to us when we were out there that at least one large pine would have to come down. Would you agree with that?
An oak tree. There was one oak.
An oak tree.
That's right.
And that's the only tree you're proposing to take down?
That's the only tree that would be in the way. That's right.
You did come before us on December 1. You told us that you were beginning to reconsider the size of the proposed garage, which came in at 30 by 45, and that you thought after everything was said and done that you probably could and would downsize.
That's right. I thought the original building was too big, and I didn't need the building to be that tall.
Didn't need all that space. So now we're talking a proposed garage of 30 by 35.
30 by 35.
Sorry, not by 30 by 35, but... What's the proposed size now, 30 by 36?
Yes, sir.
But originally, you were looking for 30 by 45. So you've downsized from 30 to 45 to 30 by 36?
That's correct.
The lean-to, which you thought might be added to one of the sides of the proposed garage is now going to be coming off the back of the garage towards the rear of your property. Is that true?
True.
And it's still the same size, 12 by 45, or a different size?
It would be the width of the building, 30 feet. 30 feet long by... It's a 12-foot overhang.
So it's 12 by...
30.
12 by 30 now.
That's right.
Okay. Because there have been so many changes, bear with us because we want to make sure that it is right for purposes of the written decision that has to be filed in this case.
I understand.
All right. So I think that's everything that I wanted to go through that takes us up to tonight. I asked you one final time, Mr. Mitko, whether you have any other comments or questions of the board before we move on.
My only questions would be the... If I were granted a permit, it's just the process, you know, what... You know, I just want to know what to do next. That's all.
Okay, and we will... Ms. Clark is very good about giving that little speech at the end of these cases if we vote to grant the permit, and she will do so again tonight if the decision is favorable. Members of the board, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Kelly, you good?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Mr. Mueller?
Good. Thank you.
Fran, Mello?
I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
If we choose to grant, I just want to make a note that'll be subject to the plan submitted. So we'll just have the plan references on it because he does show a side lot of 12 feet on that plan, which was put here by an engineer. So as long as it conforms to that, it's good. But I want the plan referenced.
And we can talk about conditions as we work with this. Mr. Poirier?
Oh, good.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this public hearing is now closed, and we move on to a motion. Or actually, we move on now to a finding, which I'm going to suggest the language, and then you folks can decide whether this is something that you would vote in favor of or not. The suggested finding would be that the board may award a special permit in this case as the benefits of the proposed use outweigh the detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. Anyone make a motion to adopt that finding?
I'll make the motion to adopt that finding.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. All in favor? That finding now has been adopted. I have suggested language for our decision, and that is as follows. One of you, I would expect, will make a motion, which will be duly seconded and voted to grant a special permit under the authority granted to the board under the Carver zoning bylaw, Sections 5221 and 5300, and pertinent sections following. All is more particularly described in our previous minutes and which will be described further in the written decision of this case. Does anybody want to make a decision or make a motion to grant the special permit based on that authority?
So moved.
Okay, so Ms. Clark is first and Mr. Mueller is second? Is that right? Or did I reverse that?
No, you had it right.
Okay. All in favor to grant the special permit under the pertinent sections of the bylaw, 5221 and 5300, and Sections following?
Aye.
Okay, so that decision is unanimous. And Mr. Mitko, who's been sitting patiently and quietly, your special permit has been granted.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you.
However, we're not quite done because we need to hear members of the board on any conditions that they would like to attach to the grant of this special permit. Ms. Clark, if I may be so bold to start with you.
A condition that the lean-to is to the rear of the building and that there is an as-built plan signed off by the building department after the foundation is poured and that it is subject to the site plan submitted in the first meeting for which a copy is incorporated and made here, too.
Just so that the record can be clear about this, when we talk about after the foundation is poured, we're talking about the foundation for the garage because there will be no foundation for the lean-to.
Also, also that the size is 30 by 36 with a total square footage of 1080, 1,080 square feet. With the special permit encompasses 380 square feet over what the bylaw allows.
Not including the lean-to.
Not including the lean-to, which we don't consider as part of the structure.
Lean-to is going to be 30 by 45, right?
No.
No, 30 by 36, but it's not part of the square footage.
The lean-to is going to be 12 by 30.
12 by 12.
12 by 30. Thank you, Mr. Poirier.
Thank you. Lot of numbers.
Lot of stuff.
Ms. Clark, what else?
I'm done.
Anyone else have any conditions? I want to inquire if we want to condition this just on the taking of the one oak tree? Do we want to condition this on there being just the one floor, radiant floor heat only, and no water?
I... I mean that...
This is a no's here, so let's talk about that.
I don't see any point in talking about the radiant floor heat or the water because there's no indication that he has any residential use planned for this at all. And the structure of these metal buildings is that they don't have a second floor. If we condition it to be 1,080 square feet, if it comes in big earth, then he's back in front of us.
What about the issue of not having any heat inside? Do we want to condition this on that?
Nope.
Any other thoughts on that? I know, Mr. Mueller, you were thinking maybe we should. What is your thought?
I'm good. I know he's going to have the radiant heat in there. I mean, water over there for a hose or outside spigot is fine, but I don't think there's anything.
Well, because I'm responsible, Mr. Mitko, for drafting these decisions, I want to make sure that you understand what these conditions are. I'm going to go through them again.
Okay.
And sometimes I write them down, right? Sometimes I don't. So if the rest of the board would listen to me, I would be grateful because there are a lot of numbers here. These numbers have been fluid up until tonight. They've been changing, and you've been adjusting, and that's all okay, but we want to get it accurate now.
Absolutely.
So this grant of the special permit will be conditioned on the plan of record that has already been filed in this case. It will also be conditioned on the as-built plan that your builder will give you following the pouring of the foundation on the garage. Also going to be conditioned on the location of the lean-to to the rear of the building rather than to either side like you were thinking originally. The actual square footage is going to be 30 by 36 on that garage, which is 1,080 square feet. You're 380 feet over, which is why we need to do this, why you have come before us for relief. The lean-to itself will be 12 by 30. Did I finally get that dimension right, everybody? Poirier nodding his head vigorously there. Are there any other conditions that we need to discuss? I see Ms. Mello going like this. Mr. Mueller, who is very attentive and is listening carefully. I see he seems to be smiling in satisfaction. Mr. Poirier, the Cheshire Cat tonight. He's got that smirk. And Kelly, you seem to be very studious over there. Do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, and Ms. Clark, who's always humble. You're good. Okay, so do I hear a motion to adopt all of these conditions that I just listed to the grant of the special permit?
I will make the motion to adopt the conditions to the grant of the special permit.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. Do I hear a second? Mr. Mueller, thank you for that. Mr. Mitko was getting nervous there for a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
So your special permit, Mr. Mitko, has been granted, subject to these conditions.
Right.
I hope you're pleased with this.
I am, very, thank you.
We wish you the best of luck with your construction. When are you gonna start?
Well, I'm just a little confused. Do I-
This is where Ms. Clark comes in. She will unconfuse you. So let me stand down and turn over the meeting to Ms. Clark.
Mr. Mitko, the decision will be written up and filed with the town clerk in the next few days, I assume. Once it's been filed with the town clerk, it's stamped as received, and that begins a twenty-day appeal period. All of the people that you mailed out the notice to will get a copy of the decision, and then if they want to appeal the decision, they have to file with Superior Court, and that's probably not going to happen. But they'll get a copy of the decision. At the end-
I'm sorry.
Okay, let me finish. At the end of the twenty days, you'll be called by the town clerk to come in and pick up the copy of your original decision. That decision has to be filed at the registry of deeds, which you can e-file or you can just take it down and file it. You put it in a box. They don't allow anyone in the building. You'll get your copy back at the same time, and then when you have it, when it's been filed with the registry of deeds, you can take that copy that's been stamped by the registry to the building department, and they will issue your building permit.
Okay, I see.
So you can have your building permit in about a month.
Sure. I wasn't sure, because it made it sound like I wouldn't be issued the permit until after the foundation was poured, which-
No, 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 no. No, no, no. You have to, you'll be able to start it, weather permitting, I assume, in about a month.
Sure.
Depending on how fast the building department gets your permit approved.
And in the event of the weather turns bad for the rest of the winter, I, I'm not, I don't have to start this project until spring if the weather doesn't allow, right?
No, your special permit is good for three years.
Okay.
So you're good.
I'd like to get it done right away, but it's probably not the best time of year, so we'll have to wait and see how that goes.
Yeah, maybe that tree will come down on its own.
Don't say that.
I find that in my yard a lot, so, but that's the appeal. I mean, we'll file a decision. If you don't hear from the town clerk by second week of February, end of the first week of February, please call them. They get a little busy, and sometimes they forget this part.
Okay.
So, and just check.
So it's basically the butters list that we're waiting for a response or no response?
Yeah, probably no response. They'll get a mailed copy, not a certified mail. You don't have to pay for that again, just a regular mailed copy of the decision.
Okay.
And it's on file at the town hall with, with a, I think, a piece of paper that kind of explains what they can do with it.
All right, so I shouldn't pay for this building yet, then?
I would wait till the twenty days. I mean, some people go ahead and dig the hole as soon as they're done with us. But that, you're running a risk without a building permit.
Right, right, okay. All right, well, so I'll wait to hear from the town around the first or second week of February, and hopefully be able to go to the registry.
All right, if you need any other questions, you can always reach out to one of us, or come to me through email. I'll be happy, I'll be happy to explain it to you again.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Two more things, Ms. Mitko. I would not wait for the town to reach out to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think it probably would be a good idea to be in conversation with the planning department.
All right.
And they can give you a heads up on whether any objections or appeal will be filed on this case. I agree with Ms. Clark, that's highly unlikely, because there's no one present in opposition here.
Okay, but there is-
The other thing to remember as well is to get your as-built plans filed after the foundation is poured, because that's one of the conditions. Although you may go through all of the other stuff that Ms. Clark just told you about, you'll still need to file that as-built plan after the foundation is in.
Sure.
Okay, I think that will be the only other paper submission that will be required here. Everything else has gone through already. But please be proactive about this. Don't wait for anybody to contact you.
Okay.
Okay.
I will, yeah. Thank you very much.
I think that's good advice, everybody. I see Ms. Mello shaking her head affirmatively. Sometimes the reason that we say this is because sometimes the planning department has not is not followed through, either through lack of resources or personnel or out, or they're sick, or there's reorganization going on. So sometimes there is a delay. And if you wait, expecting a call, that might not come as quickly as you would like.
Sure.
Especially if you're anxious to begin construction.
But I do have to wait the twenty days, right?
Yes, that's required.
And then you'll get the copy to get recorded at the registry of deeds.
All right, I'll wait twenty-one days before I call.
Okay, and the registry, if you haven't been over there, is over on Overton Street by the prison.
Oh, sure, yeah.
If you haven't been there either, so.
And, Mr. Mitko, don't mistake the prison for the register.
Okay. I'll try not to.
All right, so I think you're done. You can check out if you want. Enjoy the rest of the evening with your family. Stay healthy and Happy New Year to you.
Great, thank you, and Happy New Year to all of you, too. Thanks again.
Or to stay with me for just a minute. The next thing that appears on our agenda is correspondence that may have been received, if any. I've not received anybody, anything. Has anybody received any?
Nope.
So at this juncture, I ask if there is any issue or any subject about which any of you individually would like to address at this point, which is not on the agenda. I don't hear any voices being raised, so I think we've come to that magic moment where we are very close to adjournment. Before we do adjourn, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year. This was a very difficult last year for everyone, and also for this board and the petitioners who come before the board. So with heartfelt wishes for a much better 2021, and a healthy 2021, and a non-violent 2021. I ask for a motion for adjournment.
Before I make that motion, do we need to have a second, a meeting next month, or do we have nothing?
I don't have notice, Ms. Clark, of any cases right now in the queue.
Okay.
It's not unusual, because we're deep in the winter, and there's not much going on right now, but if something does pop up, you can be sure that I'll let everybody know, and we'll negotiate a new date.
Well, echoing your sentiments for a happy, healthier, safer 2021, I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I was gonna say, we're all staying together.
Thank you, Area 58. Good night.
Did we vote on that? All in favor?
All in favor.
Say aye.
Aye.
Now we can adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.